As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda. Our President can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Sid In.
Yes.
Hey, actually, we are on.
Yes.
The open meeting in the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Acts of Twenty Twenty Three, signed into law by Governor Healy with March twenty nine, two thousand and three. This Act continues to exempt certain provisions under open meeting law regarding the vote meetings and public access until March thirty first of two thousand and twenty five. This committee is convened via Zoom and in person. As posted on the district's website, please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recorder, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the erasure and function now to notify the Chair now if required by law. See any hands out there? I see Mike and Morna. Actually, Mike, I should go back and you're one of the staff members. Mike Ariya, are you here?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now I'll continue. Meeting materials, along with the agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public School's website in a folder titled Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Agenda. Under the tab School Committee, the public is encouraged, follow along, using the posted agenda and documents unless the Chair notes otherwise. The public comments agenda item is devoted to the school committee to give to the public. As such, it is. Its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of your public comments rather than a bi-directional conversation. Here are the general rules for any form of a comment period. One, if a person wishes to speak and make a comment during the virtual meeting, they do so by sign up to speak publicly in advance. And up until the public comment agenda item had. Please hand your Zoom main match so that we are able to unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who publishes the comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the Chair, as time allows. The Chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time. Especially if it is related to a topic that is not yet brought up. Or you may email comments in advance. And up until the public comments agenda item two, comments for S C meeting at Maynard dot K T dot C S. You must state in the subject line, public comment, and include your first and last name and the time to ensure your comment can be read. Comments read by the Chair will only be read for three minutes because the submitted comments are longer than the cutoff. To ensure all comments are able to be read in entirety, it is suggested that you keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty words. However, submitted comments longer than three hundred and fifty words may be included in public record for their entire. Note, anyone can submit comments for public record after the comments agenda has passed, providing an email copy to. Listed up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these comments, to have these additional comments included. Meeting's probable, goes then, before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some wrong rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure. Accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will look through the numbers for additional comments and questions in time a lot. Please hold off speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair and take care not to interrupt any speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. Before we move on to the first agenda, roll call to come to order. Awesome names again. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
Mary, Mary Brantley.
Yes.
Right, yeah, Elizabeth voted here. That means we have come to order. And the meeting's called Order Excellent. First agenda item is the annual reorganization of school committee. Uh, Officer Luntz, somebody willing to make a motion or a comment or something?
I can make a motion to have Natasha Rivera as Chair. Share second. Have a discussion, so.
Let's take a roll call. I can't wait. There any comments, questions?
You guys, are you, okay, I just want to make sure you sure about that? I mean, because, all right.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
Most particular item, Natasha Rivera.
Oh, do I need a vote? Oh, yeah, sure. Although, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
And Elizabeth, I voted in the absence, so it's unanimous. The next motion.
Oh, yep, that's right. That's right. Now, um, all right, so I will entertain motions to elect. Thank you, Brian. Excellent job. Look forward to it next year as well. Um, I will entertain motions to nominate for our Vice Chair for the School Committee.
Motion to nominate Mauro Hogan as Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Um, any other discussions, Mauro, anything?
No.
Thank you very much. I will be leveraging your help a lot.
Fine.
Um, okay, uh, roll call. Uh, Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Um, School Committee, Subcommittee, and Liaisons, I. Only today found the document. There was three different documents about. Subcommittees, so I think the only thing that I will say is I put, I created a new folder, um. Does anyone have any appetite for changing the subcommittees that we currently have? Before we start assigning, I think. That maybe that may be the first question that we would want to discuss. Are we fine with the subcommittees that we have and we want to carry them over? Do we think any of them would want to be tweaked? I know we, we definitely going to have need for negotiations and, um. Personnel, so I think that would be retained as, as is budget, yes, uh, policy, yes. So I think the other two. The D E I Subcommittee and the Strategic Planning, um. Curriculum strategic planning. So those are the two that right now. Is there appetite to have the members of the D E I? Join with the districts? I don't, Brian, I know this came up and I just wanted to, I don't, I don't have, I just want to put it out for discussion. I don't. Have strong feelings, I'm not a part of that committee, but I just know that that was to, to make the most effective use of everyone's time and bandwidth and what we expect. This year that we all expect action to come out from, um, that, what do, what do we think? I don't know.
We could definitely add, so it's kind of funny, and I, I don't know that we can make a decision on that tonight, and I don't know.
Okay.
Three and Elizabeth. So one of the two members isn't here, so I have to change things without.
Okay, yeah, agreed.
And, uh, but we can work, you know, Hillary and I and Elizabeth and Chuck. Can work together and make sure that they're informed, invited, and we can be as efficient.
Okay.
I think that I like the idea of keeping the Subcommittee, um, but participating in the District's D E I Committee. Um, I think that we should early on have a meeting, uh, with Brian and Chuck to sort of talk about. Um, the coordination and the, and the meeting, um, you know, works, when we do a goal workshop with the School Committee to talk about goals. I think that there can be slightly different focus, um, with the School Committee Subcommittee than with the, um, District's D E I Committee. Um, and so, and I think that if. D E I is an important part of the School Committee's goal, um, having the Subcommittee. Um, if we effectively use it can be a way to make sure that stays on our, the forefront of our, um. Like decision making and such for the year.
I, I think that, um. Brian, your point about Elizabeth not being here is, is right, um, and I don't think anyone really thinks that. We wouldn't want to be part of it, so it's just a matter of how do we make the effective use of everyone's time and communicating information, so no one's feeling like there's a gap or. So I, I think maybe it's best that we'll, I'll leave it to, you know, Hillary, I think you and Beth and Brian, and you all maybe can provide a recommendation. Um, maybe for our next meeting or after Beth gets back. Um, just because it would be good to understand the structure, so we, at the School Committee level. Understand of what we would be expecting to come out of the Subcommittee versus, you know, the, the School Committee or. What do we call in the other one? I'm sorry, I, I'm going to confuse the two, and I just want to make sure I'm, it's not a task force, or is it's. It's a District's Committee, right, got it. So, um, so maybe that's a, a follow-up, so we'll, there's a space for it, we just don't know what, in what form that will be, right? Okay, um, Mary and, and Maude, does that sound right to you as well?
Oh, yeah, again, not duplication, just as long as they.
Right, how, how we make them effective for everybody and, um. But, perfect. Okay, and then the other, the other one was, we have the, Mary, you were on, you and Beth were on the. What do you, yeah, what do you, what do you think? Um, do you feel like that?
Yeah, we.
Okay.
Yeah, we dig it in, dig in, and we always get off to a good note and then get distracted with things, but I think to keep it on the radar is a really good thing.
Okay, I, I, I think so. I think the curriculum part I'd like to, you know, hear more about as well, so, um. Maybe we just say, okay, look, it ain't broke, let's not fix it too much, and, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead and, I, I don't know if anyone has. Um, thoughts about trying something new or different, or does everyone feel? Um, where they currently are, since we are carrying them over. I know Beth isn't here, so I don't want to make any firm decisions, but just. For those here, um, Mary, are you still comfortable with?
What's that one? Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mauro, I think. The personnel would be more of a, with the negotiations, I imagine we're going to have a little bit more. Um, you know, work at some point in the, in the winter, so are you okay with that and policy?
Yeah, um, I did have a question whether or not we're going to. Split up the goals and standards like we did last year. Um, for Brian's.
But then, maybe, let's think about it. Maybe we don't, if we're going to be doing a lot of, you know, with the negotiations, you know, I. I don't know, that's a good point. I don't know how the best, is avoid redundancy, um.
It seemed kind of weird to have them split up.
I think it started because at one point, I was going to do, and then Beth really, you know, I, I get it, so.
I know it happened, it's just a little bit odd, but.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, we'll decide, we'll figure that part out. Um, I think either way, we will. Either be the same or we'll just merge it. Um, maybe if it does get merged, um. I don't know, we'll need to decide on which, which Subcommittee. Um. Will want it to fall under. That's the other piece, and I think there was. Questions there, so that I think will leave outstanding for now, um, and Hillary. For, for you on Subcommittee's. Um, policy, um, and the D E I, whatever that version is, would that be?
Um, I definitely want to be involved with D E I, um, like that's a huge priority for me.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it makes sense to stay with policy, um, but I'm less emotionally connected to that one.
No, no, um.
But I think it makes sense.
Okay, and I know that we have the, you know, the, the buildings, we have those liaisons and those, that membership will stay, um, the same as well.
So I have a really hard time making it to those meetings. Um, they're at like five o'clock on Mondays and, um. My little one is having six hours of early intervention right now that.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically can happen at four thirty, um. So.
Do we, do you want to step away from that? I mean, I think we're, I'll be supportive of what, what, what it is your bandwidth is able to do.
Um. I feel like I should, but also her schedule could be changing, so could we maybe revisit that one in August? Um, and I'll have a better idea of whether or not I could commit. I don't want to be on it and not able to go to the meetings, because that's not really fair. Um, so, uh, I may need to step away from that one to.
Okay.
Good representation.
When you have more of an idea of your schedule, um, because I know it's a little bit more of a formal process to get, you know, members and stuff changed, so. Um, let's just revisit that as well in, in, in August and see how, you know, what pans out, and we can, we'll figure it out. There, um. And then, so I did, I did find a little bit before, I, I found a, a sheet of. I copied over what was last year. I put it in our folder for Subcommittee, um, so when everyone has a time, I'll go ahead and just kind of plug it in. Um. I don't think anything will be different. Um, I'm okay with continuing on with, um. With finance liaison, fin, uh, FinCom and Select Board. If, um, unless anyone else wants to. All right. Okay, so I think we're good for now with, uh, organization-wise liaison. The only other thing that we'll probably come back to is. Um. I know that they have the Fields Committee or the Task Force. I think we'll want to talk about some of those a little bit more, and I, I know that. Um, Denise just sent an email over, uh, recently. I know the Recreation Committee. Is looking to pick up some steam on maybe taking some lead or taking, I don't know how, what form. They haven't scheduled any meetings yet that I saw, but they put out. Um, kind of like a, a notice that it's something that's a priority for them to, to do, so, um. Maybe when we hear more about that and how, what cadence that might be, we can see if there's an opportunity there, Hillary. To, I know that's something you were, maybe if you're stepping away from the Green Meadow, you know, Building Committee, you know, maybe that might be a place that.
Um, I also, I had said this last year, but then I stayed on the email, so I don't know if it worked, but, um, I can't do the Safety Committee meetings. Um, those are all while I'm at work. Mary, can you do those?
I can, I, how often do they meet, sorry?
Once a month and at like three thirty on Thursdays.
That up, yeah, 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 too.
And you know what, um, Mary, if, yeah, because Thursdays, I know we end up having like budget sometimes anyway, so I know usually my schedule is. Somewhere, so I'd write, at least one, somebody will go, be, if you're able to do it, that'd be great. And if it becomes too much, just, we can circle back and see. Um. All right, I think that's. It right now for the liaisons. I will, um, Brian, I was going to take the. Um, rolling calendar and just make a copy of last year's and kind of update it, but do you have a separate? Thing that you have that you're referencing? I just want to make sure that we're kind of working.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, because I'd like to put something more organized. I didn't like the way our format, that Google Doc was kind of like. A long run-on sentence. At some point, I'd like to put it a little bit more cleaner. Um, but I also want to make sure I'm not missing anything that might be on your radar as well, plugged in anywhere.
Yeah, no, that's fine. We can share what we have and maybe a spreadsheet might be easier than just a rolling Google Doc.
Yeah, I, I think something like that will just make it a little bit cleaner. Um, okay, so I'll create a folder for something like that to work off of as well. Um, okay, oh, I just bumped out of my agenda. Hold on. Sorry, what's the next thing on the agenda? I just bumped out of it.
Public comment is next.
Oh, public comment, okay, great, um. Any public comments? I know we don't have an email, so. No one. Wonderful, all right, there's that, um, urgent business.
No urgent business, I don't care.
Okay, great, um, Superintendent Report.
Great, glad to be here. I'm sorry, a few of you are open tonight, but understandably so. Um, it's just more fun when we're on person, but they do, right? So a couple of updates, uh. Mr. Karen Janis and I just returned, uh, this afternoon from. They came for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Conference, which was Monday evening to Thursday midday. Uh, some great informative sessions. Uh, I would say there's a couple hundred people that attend, so the majority of. Uh, school superintendents attend and network and just talk about things that are happening within their districts and best practices and things that are. That have worked really well. Um, there are sessions. Really, uh, informative. Um, this year, there were several sessions that were related to D E I. There were sessions related to school safety. Um, one of the all sessions for everybody in the auditorium was presented by. A group of Massachusetts Police Chiefs, there were seven chiefs there from, and they ranged from small town to big town. Um, the poor guy, I don't think it was the media, I said, poor guy. He had to get up at three or four in the morning to take the ferry over, drive over, you know, in the long, it could be. Um, we actually did have the Stow, was by, Police Chief was on the panel, and it was really interesting just to hear about. With overarching safety plan, and then look at how Alice is just a possibility to be one piece of that plan. And fire drills are another piece of that plan, but really the overarching, uh, safety plan and really doing an assessment to figure out. Do we have, does each district have all the parts, um, that they should, or do they need improvisation? So that was informative. Uh, and so it was a great day. Uh, there was one on that. I, that I chose to go to on negotiating and how to build relations with unions and improve, um, negotiations. Luckily, we're actually, and this is kind of, I find out, I find this out more often than not. That Maynard, as small as we are, we are, but we're not the tightest. I mean, there are a lot of other districts that are about our size, but we are ahead of the curve in advance. So I'm in this, at this session, and it's about negotiations, and it really turns out to be about relationships between administration. And the executive boards, the teachers, et cetera, of the unions or the paraprofessionals, and they're talking about setting up and making sure you have. Consistent meetings of this, and that, in my head, and then I shared with some people, you know, right now, I'm like, yeah, we have that, we need this, you know, the, the. Our teacher union, and the S A, our paraprofessional, once a month, and the doors always open. When I found out that is not the common strategy, there are plenty of systems where it's a pretty, um, difficult relationship, and they only need. Sort of free grievance if that, um, so and that's just one tiny little example of. How we're really, we've moved into a good place. Uh, that was there when I, that, you know, was here, we have continued in, um. So, but it's just an example, how we interact really, is, we set the bars. Which I know maybe bigger system, I think. Figure, you know, figure issue, bigger players, whatnot, um, but really, very beautiful. So it was a great conference, and I'll be about to think more on that, literally, I didn't even go, I just, I dropped speech at close to this. Um, so, but it was really useful. Um, other updates this week, so even though I'm on this conference, I'm going to email and talk to Greg, and several, um. Submissions for the bleachers came in that are being reviewed. We got a submission, so the R F Q went out, if you all know. That went out earlier, and they were due, I believe, um, a couple of days ago. And we got a submission from, and I may mispronounce the name because I haven't been, uh, perfectly, submission yet, so go tech. Answer Advisory, Colliers, and C H A Consultant. So the next couple of days, we'll be reviewing those and reading. I mean, I can share.
Without Colliers, that's the same for, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, so that was, that's exciting, and that's, you know, we put the R F Q out, submissions are coming in, it's starting to, starting to move. So I will keep you informed on that, you know, whether it's tomorrow or eventually. Um. Also, it'd be the Maynard Education Foundation Plan Programs, so they sent their end of year, I think it's in a pack, so. Have, if you've already seen in your folder, um, so you hear an memo from Amanda, so I'm not going to read you those memo. Um, the exciting parts, if I can just, because people will watch this, and I want to give the Maynard Education Foundation credit for that, they. Contributed just over thirty-six thousand dollars to the school district this past year, and some of the big topics, so without going into the. Manual of what each teacher got, topics were enriching our students' experience inside and outside the classroom, enhancing the school curriculum. Meeting the social, emotional learning needs of our students, funding continued learning for our educators. Supporting literacy for all our students, helping students soar. So just to give you a taste of how that thirty-six thousand dollars got spent and supported. Teachers, primarily students and teachers, so thank you to the E F. And also, who do we, which is really, I'm going to turn this over to, uh, very exciting that we have Sid. Come here. You know, I, I knew I was going to say it wrong, so I said Sid M, um. Who, like some of our other teachers and other teachers in other districts, they do a site that if you go with E F. And they go on trips and they provide opportunities for kids, sometimes international, sometimes it's within, within the U S. And he has a trip that he's put together with E F that on national parks, he's here to explain that. I think some of the information is in your folder, all right, and so you could previewed in, um, just to keep you informed in terms of what's happening, where it's happening. You're up, Sid.
If you need your presentation.
All right, so, um, thank you all for having me here. I just wanted to, you know, make you guys aware of. My passion for science, my love for science, and how I want to share that with the Maynard community. Um, a lot of the. Ninth graders that I have physics, they realize that. Science is hands-on. I could show you all the pictures you want of national parks. It's not the same thing as going to a national park. So, um, I looked into a five-day trip to see the national parks. Uh, in, you know, Vegas, Utah, Arizona area, and so, um, five days, about twenty-eight hundred dollars. You get to go to Pink Sand Dunes, Bryce Canyon, Zion National Park, get to do a Colorado. Uh, rafting trip around Ben, which is beautiful, um, Glen Canyon, and of course, get to see. Um, Grand Canyon, and so, uh, looking forward to doing this with Miss Learner. Um, so, and hands-on, exciting, science is sort of, I'm about to initiate that. You have any questions? Go for that. Yes.
Students, you have things to, I am assuming they got interest yet, do you want to get?
So I wanted to make sure I looked at the proper channels first and ask you guys, and make sure that we're all on board on the same page. Um, a couple of kids heard about this, and about seven or eight kids already said like, oh my God, I would do that, I would be, if. We could do that, and I said, I'll let you know. And so at this point, um, I wouldn't even think about scheduling parents, it's all. I did this, next step is that be with parents, uh, with the real interest is.
So that's the number of students, say, with the two of you.
Uh, twenty is sort of the, the, the max for, for two.
And there's a chapel.
Oh, that's correct, yes. So, safety and security is very important, making sure that the kids are, you know, monitored, and we know what's going on. So. One of those four things looking.
Why do you think, what time's it going, sorry?
Over the, uh, April break, so, you know, text time.
I mentioned to you, my husband and I did this trip last May, and it was a year ago May, and it was the trip of all his time. So it's just, I just can't say enough for you, it's like, right down to the Colorado, the, the rafting trip. It's awesome. Cool. You know, I'm.
Mauro, did you have any questions?
Any questions, I think that it sounds fantastic. Um, I'm assuming that for kids that don't. That can't afford this, so obviously it'd be some sort of scholarship or whatever.
That's what I'm looking into, yeah, that's absolutely.
And. Does a nurse usually go on these trips too?
So, from what I understand from Nurse Janet is, yes, they're supposed to sort of, I don't know.
So she'd be the one.
Well, that's an E, so just, you know, transparency, this is not a Maynard high school trip, it's an E F trip. So she was checking that Sid is. Managing or her chaperoning or be chaperoning, um, as well as work, but it's an E F trip, so they manage it, they. They get the, they get the nurse, et cetera, they, so when we talk about safety and protocols, it's, so it's very similar to, I could say. One of the least tripped that, uh, there's that, so, so now it's very successful. Yeah.
Yeah, great representation.
Yes.
What you're.
Great, uh Hillary, did you have um questions?
Um, can you just say a little bit more about like the potential for scholarships or financial assistance for kids?
I have no idea yet, to be quite honest, I have to actually look into it, but that was one of the things when I first talked to Virgil. About is I don't want to put just. A specific type of kid, I want to work for everybody and looking at fundraisers or anything else we could do, but that's where. You know, it was.
Can you in some way let us know about that piece, um it doesn't have to be at the meeting, but just so that we know, um. Moving forward, like if we're having trips that only certain kids can afford and stuff. But otherwise, it sounds really amazing.
So, um. Uh Hillary, sorry, did you have any other questions? Okay, um. Brian, and I maybe didn't, maybe I missed this, I apologize, um if I did, are we needing to vote on this? Um, today, or we?
So this is not a Maynard high school trip, it's an E F trip, so this was. And you're all well aware of it and just. One of the reasons that I think Sid's like, I don't have all the interest on fundraising is because that my question, I said, let's go through the school committee first, just so that.
Yeah.
Indicate support, you don't have to officially vote on it, then he can work on the fundraising, kind of, we, we were kind of cutting that. Close with one of the recent trips with Ms. Adams, and we want to make sure we were in the proper order for this.
Got it, got it, I think the part that, and we, this might be helpful for the school committee to figure out, because I know we do some of these trips where. The understanding of what is school sponsored versus, you know, not, because I know that some of our resources are. Provided for the trip and some of times there, we're, we're not. And so I think maybe that's where it gets a little. Confusing for me anyway about which ones we. Need to give permission to, if they're involving students or if we're funding in any way or providing staff for it, I'm just. I don't know, I don't know all those details, it sounds like that's still, some of it's still being worked out, but that maybe is what I get confused about. As far as when you need our permission versus not, I, I do appreciate you bringing it up though, because I think it's a phenomenal. Um. Program and I really look forward to hearing more about it, um just for over housekeeping and procedural, um side note, Hillary.
When I looked into it, it seemed like even though it's an E F trip, because these students wouldn't know about it and they wouldn't be going on it, they wouldn't be invited to it. If they weren't Maynard students. Um, it like legally should be con, is considered like a school trip, regardless of like. What other intermediaries are involved, um like there is some legal.
So maybe, maybe the policies subcommittee can look at that and figure out, because I know these come up quite, you know, and I, I don't want to miss out on an opportunity, I just also know that. I don't want parents pointing the fingers at us that we maybe should have asked different questions or something at some point, and I. Uh, I think everyone would make sure that we want to dot our um eyes and cross our t's as much as possible, um and so we don't. Um, I also know that my questions for school sponsored might be different. Than not schools sponsored, I think about like equity and, and some of those pieces, um it just helps frame. A little bit more of how, how deep. You know, we would, we want to go into the, the questioning versus just thank you for sharing this opportunity and bringing it to the students. So anyway, I just wanted to. Bring that up, um Brian, so maybe that's a. Conversation piece.
And I have no problem if you guys ask me more questions during them.
No, I think if you could just continue to update us when you have more information, I think we'd be interested regardless of whether we need to approve it officially or not, I think it's great to. To see how our students are able to engage with these opportunities outside of, um and this is a wonderful, wonderful. Thing that, um thank you for bringing that, um you know, however you're liaising and mediating it, I appreciate you being the middle man there.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you guys.
Very much.
Thank you so much. Okay. Um, Brian, any other? Updates that you had?
For today.
Okay. Alright, um. So draft. Timeline for moving on just to the. I, I created a folder, um. Similar to what we had bef, for the F Y twenty three. And I think, is there a shortcut that I put in our folder for tonight? I may have.
I didn't see anything.
Oh, no, I didn't put the, you know what, I just realized, I didn't put the. The timeline in, in our folder, but it is in, we go to the superintendents for Brian Haas. Um, for twenty four. Think I uploaded it there. I can't tell you, I had a hard time finding our goals, um. Does anybody have a secret where our goals went?
In a big form.
It says there, Mary, are they in your notebook? I don't have access to that in Google Drive. I think Beth maybe has, um. Has some, anyway, so what I did was, uh Brian, I, I and everyone else, under. The superintendent evaluation. And goals, there's another folder for, um. For you for F Y twenty four and within there, there's two folders that I just kind of replicated, it seemed like it worked well for, for this year. Um. And actually, Colleen, am I? Can I share my screen, sorry? Because I actually, it's in the, um. Twenty four, there's a, a timeline, it's right now, it's just draft. But I would want us to just look at it so I can pencil in some more firm dates. On, on what we're. Looking to do, um. So based on like establishing goals, it already says July, um which is now, I don't know if we're gonna hit that mark, so. Brian, I know we had talked about doing. An August. Workshop. Earlier ish, um. I think that's what we're gonna probably need to, to do. To. Get you, because I think the whole point was that we can get some goals, we're also gonna need to have the follow up information about the. There was one more presentation that we. Um, the math, was it, um? From last year's, that was kind of like carrying over the uh math curriculum.
Yeah.
And so I think, um, when Beth gets back. Sometime in that, did we set a date, Colleen, for a workshop, I thought we started talking about one, but I don't know if we ever landed on a date. Okay. Yeah, we need, I think we need to pick something that early, like after Beth gets back, so we can do a workshop for. Um, goals.
We maybe do the, the night of our August meeting and just do it earlier, so it's one night.
Thought we set a date, am I, am I making stuff up in my head?
And we talked about it, but I don't think we.
So we talked about, we have a meeting on. The seventeenth, I know we talked about doing a workshop maybe before that meeting, right? Um, but. I don't know if that would be enough time. We might need at least the school committee. Um, to do. One. Earlier, I think, so let's just, I'll put a pin in that, but I think that's what I would think coming ahead, we, we need to, the school committee needs to come up with like our own. Vision of our goals and then we can help kind of bring Brian in with. These are the things that we're prioritizing, um I do have. Separately, um I was able to get from. Mask, although not in a pretty format. They said, it was, they sent out to the listserv, um the questions. But it's in a, like a PDF of the, of the survey monkey, the ones that they had last year, so I started, if everyone was comfortable with those questions. I'm just gonna take those and, and put them into a Google. Form. And then Colleen, I think. I'm just gonna have you. You be the owner of it, because I don't want to get everyone's responses back, if that's okay with you, you and I can coordinate, um. And so we can, in the works between now and. Um, the next month, that will be something that we can get out for our self evaluation. But I, I don't know where our goals are. If anybody has any.
Um, I can, I can scan them and send them to everybody.
Oh, yeah, they're written down somewhere, I know they are, maybe they're in an email somewhere, I, I honestly, maybe I just didn't look hard enough, I found every other year, in case anyone was wondering, um, so. Going back to the Brian's timelines, so Brian, I think. Um, I'd like to hear from you, maybe you and I can talk about what your, the timeline for your evaluation, so we can make sure that we're penciling in, um. Dates, you know, did it, what worked, what didn't work for this last year, um. Do you see any of it?
Um, no, not yet.
Okay.
Do I have access to this? Well, I, I can, you can share your screen as well.
Oh, I can, oh, okay, sorry, I didn't hear that, let me, let me share my screen, maybe that might be.
I found the goal, we sent it in the chat.
Okay, um. Let me. Share my screen. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is in the, um. And maybe the permissions on the folder, Brian, I may, may need to look at that, maybe I, I didn't add you in there for the, there's, because there are certain things in there that. Um. When I copied it, I didn't check the permission, sorry, so this is just a, a working document that, the timeline that we worked off of last year, we created one, we kind of created one a little bit later. But I had penciled in some, um. Some rough time periods, um I guess what I would want to hear, um from everyone is. You know, look at this, this is Brian as well, you, when you get access, you can see it, does this timeframe look, you know, work, how did that work for this year, um?
Oh, just in, I felt like we were trying to crunch again, especially if, if we, I mean, we were fortunate this year because we. We didn't have any transition, you know, of numbers and then like next year, if we have a transition, we're kind of pushing it by having. The final evaluation end of June, if anything happens, then. You know, we won't have any, everybody's feedback, I'm, I was thinking maybe if we have. Brian's end of cycle report, the middle of May, and it just kind of, you know, so that we're actually finished the middle of June. That gives us a little cushion in case we need it.
And we, and we did actually, I take that back, yeah, we, we did, we did do that anyway, uh this year, right, we did like May sixteenth, Brian, you sent yourself.
Yep.
Yourself one, so, um, are, are you thinking that would work? Good if, if we did that, Mary, or no?
Um, Brian, number four superintendent provides end of cycle report, middle of May versus end of May, and then. And then we're done by the middle of June, so if we need any question, we still have two weeks at June.
Yeah, because we do like to do the, the two different meetings, you know, we go over it, I think that seems to have been working well. So, okay, if that's, if. I'll, I'll edit that, I'll look at the one that we did this year, just kind of put in some dates, some tentative dates, I'll keep it as a working document. Um. For us all and I'll, I'll, I'll circulate it once. I do that, if that's alright with folks, unless everyone else has any. I just want to get something, you know, in writing, they'll kind of start holding us to it a little bit, um and then we can. Provide, provide us some accountability. There. Alright, any other thoughts, um Hillary, anything? Okay, Mauro, any thoughts?
No, I'm on that.
Okay, alright, um and Colleen, thank you for sending the email, so.
Actually, my only thought is that I do think we should have a separate school committee workshop, um prior to. Um. Working with Brian on his school.
So I think that probably the best thing would be though is. August. Uh, early August, at some point, I think, I have to see when. Um. That's what I'm. Might be, uh I would suggest. So we can talk about that offline. I agree. Um. Alright, and then, where was? Uh, oh, and the self evaluation, so everyone, it sounds like everyone is fine. If I take the questions that we have before and I put them in a Google form, Colleen, I'll just have Colleen copy that, I'll save it as a template, just so maybe every year, it can just be that, and. Colleen, you can just maybe every fiscal year, make a copy, new fiscal year, and then, um, the responses will go to Colleen in a, you know. Does anyone have any strong feelings about whether your email is included or not, I mean, I know maybe put email, but maybe it doesn't get shared, um. It's, it's our self evaluation, so it's. I don't know. What everyone's thoughts are about that, but Colleen, I'll make Colleen the owner, so she'll be the one who gets the feedback and can circulate it afterwards. Okay. And um I think I will work on that within the next. Couple of days to get that out, because I will. Um, have limited hand mobility, um, in a short, in a short period, so I'll see if I can get that going. Um, so at least everyone can work on doing that, it's like thirty nine questions or something, so it's not small. Alright, um. Anything else for questions on timeline? No, alright. Policy. Mauro, is this you and, um? Mike, I know Mike's joining us, thank you, Mike.
I think it's just Mike.
Okay.
I mean, I made, I made some comments in the word doc that was in our folder, just formatting stuff, so other than that.
Okay, so, um. I know there was a couple, Colleen, can you clarify, I know there's a couple of updates and there's a. So those seven A, and those are the most recent ones from.
Everything in there is the most recent, Mike went over it and actually the second time around this morning, I sent an email, he has both. Principal and they had a few other minor changes, he also had a document addressing all the questions from last. Watched the video, I sent him the notes from the meeting, he is here tonight, obviously, to answer the questions. And, um.
Thank you, Mike, thank you so much also, um for, for doing this, I know this is a lot of. Legwork to go through some of these old. Documents and really bring them to where they need to be and also just processing the feedback that we shared, um. In, in different ways to consolidate that and incorporate that, as just, um I have the paper that you had sent over that has the responses. Is there anything in particular that you, Mike, maybe wanted to share or? Um, highlight or speak on in particular beyond that, or just to clarify? Just from what you listened in the prior meeting?
So you. All have the updates and just the question that went through, uh, nothing really specific, um I, I did take into account some of the feedback for sure, um so. In the, in the coach's handbook, I did specify where it mentions the student athlete handbook, uh, the page and section, um so. Anyone who had a question could go. But I also wanted to clarify that each coach does have access, a copy of the student athlete handbook, so they can go that as well as. Any point in time, I actually created a, a, a Google Drive, probably there's a lot of important documents, there are two of the dots that are. Access to them at all times, um, I think another big question that came up. Was the question about academic eligibility in which classes kind of towards that, um I discussed it with Ms. York today, Ms. York, and it would. Classes, um and looking at. MPS's policy, Maynard's policy as compared to M I A, we're pretty much in line with it. The M I A's policy is, if you fail two classes, you are academically ineligible to participate in the next grading period, so that's. Basically what Maynard has, um, the only difference is we have that caveat, if they, if they do fail a class, um. We can have them go on like a during plan, provisional eligibility, uh, and that does not necessarily mean home club mandated, it's more of a plan. Um, with the teacher of the class, the guidance counselors and administration, along with the student athlete. Um, so it could be homework club, it could be after school tutoring, um anything to bring their grades up. Uh, that, those things normally take place right after, um, none of our practice before three P M, so. Twenty, and for all of that stuff, they, like, like right after the school day, heading into their athletic practices.
Thank you, um and the detailed explanation you provided was phenomenal, so thank you for going and citing all of the, the eligibility. Um, aspects to. Kind of put it in one place, that was, um, great, so I'll, I'll go around, Mary, I know some of these were your questions as well with the. Eligibility, um, did you have any, any other questions or comments on?
Thank you very much, Mike, for doing the academic eligibility is, yeah, such a huge piece, um, if the other thing. Very much, Mike, for doing the academic eligibility is, yeah, such a huge piece. Um, the other thing. Got a big one for me, was having the head coaches, the assistants, and the volunteer coaches, um, sign. I know it's an understanding, but I'm. And lots of boys here, so it's heard to say this numerous times, but you know, if you leave and somebody else comes along, it's just like. Put it in writing so that the next person, you know, is there anything to prevent us from, you know, from having people sign? The head coach, the assistant coach, or the volunteer coach, so that it's, it's written in stone, rather than just being an understanding. It's like an easy thing to do and, and it'll just. Put that in place regardless who's here.
Yeah, so you're breaking up a bit. I got the general, uh, premise of what you're saying, so I did take that feedback. And I put in there, uh, coaches handbook that. It's all coaches, but head coaches, it's an involuntary, everything in the coach's handbook applies to them. Um, it's not just head coaches, so I just wanted to make that clear, so there's no questions about it.
Great. Thank you. Mauro, oh, sorry, that was, uh, Mary, did you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, Mauro?
No, I didn't have any, uh, other than, you know, the, the comments that I made about formatting. Everything else was different.
And, and those. Those got tweaked, right? I just want to.
Yeah, I changed the, uh, margin. It makes sense that I had it, uh, the narrow margins because I didn't want to make it such a long read, uh. But, um, it, it is easier to read. I didn't do the one inch margins, I want three quarters margins, um, and it does a little more compact and easier to read, so.
Sounds like we're writing a paper for college, trying to figure out how many. Plan with our margins. Um, Hillary, did you have any other questions?
Um, yeah, so first of all, thank you for, um, like. Listening to our meeting and going through everything, and I also really appreciate the additional A E Ds and updating the policy. Um, to safeguard against anyone forgetting there. Um, I went through them and I had a couple of little things, um. I also only really briefly went through, um, your update today, um. On section eight of, um, the student athlete handbook, it looks like it almost says the opposite of what it's trying to say. Where it says, like, adhering to school rules, including, um. Like suspensions and detentions, it almost seems like it means the opposite, right?
Let me read the wording quick.
Yeah, under code of conduct. Um, it says like in order to participate, they must be in good standing, and then it kind of says including suspensions. Detentions, I think it's supposed to be the opposite.
In order to participate, often one must be in good standing, which is defined as adherence to. Oh.
Okay, I can be confusing, yeah, so I think, uh, right there, so I will also. Be his hand, uh, but. That is definitely to say that adherence to school rules, um, and if, uh, suspension, uh, or detention occurs, that would go.
Yeah, I almost wonder, um, if. When it says adherence to school rules, that regular, um. And then maybe it almost.
Oh, okay.
You can, it, it seems like that, um.
So maybe.
Asterisk part is maybe says, it's almost like restating, you know, what you're trying to say above as a student who receives one or more. Major suspension, detention. May not be considered in good standing, so it's almost like the defining of good standings is, is, that's the definition below of what's defining.
I think maybe those two bullets could just come out and say, like, adhere to the good behavior, and then that sentence about detentions and suspensions.
Right, this is what, what defines good standings.
Yeah.
Um, and then for boys ice hockey, is it only boys or is it, um, like primarily boys, but either gender can participate?
Um, that call up that we have with Esteban is just boys ice hockey.
Okay. Um.
So we don't know.
Um. And then, let me see. Um, I liked Elizabeth's comment at our last meeting about rephrasing the only fail one class to, like, phrase it as the positive side, like. Um. Like. All classes must be passed with the exception of one or something, like in some ways flipping that around. Um, and then. Um, oh, at the end, when it talks about the COVID, uh, return to play with a doctor's note. I know there were parent emails complaining about that, um, this past year, and the. Um, handbook says that that's the school physician's recommendation. I just wanted to make sure that was still. Their recommendation and that, um. That was like a, a current, um, thing.
Well, I can see.
Yeah, and my discussions this year and.
No, Brian, I, I think you were starting to speak about maybe what you knew.
Yeah, in my conversations with the nurses who conferred with the, uh, school physician, that was still accurate at the end of school year.
Okay. Um. And then in the coach's handbook, um. Under the duties and responsibilities of a head coach, it says supervise student athletes at all times in all facilities at home and away events. And after hours off-campus behavior. Um. I thought that could get a little bit tricky. Um, in terms of what they're being, um, responsible for ensuring, like. How much are they actually responsible for? You know, at-home weekend behavior that's unrelated to the sports?
So that's more referring to, um, athletics day. If they're traveling the game, um, there.
And then one big thing I have is under, in the coach's handbook, under media relations. It says, um, do mention student athletes by name and/or have student athletes interviewed. Um, I think there needs to be a mechanism to make sure that if someone's mentioning a student's name, that it's safe for that child in that family. Um. Because for some kids, it may not be safe to have a coach who doesn't know about their family situation announcing to the press. That this child by this full name. Is in this, or a unique first name isn't in this school and in this sport, um. Is there a way to? Add a caveat or add some sort of a check, um, to make sure that we're not accidentally putting kids at risk?
Yeah, um, it's actually good, so. Say, uh, social media and during, um, kids' recognition out there, uh, much more prevalent than it has been, um. But to kind of ensure that, I can see, um, kind of changing that a bit to have coaches, like, you know. Beginning of the season throughout the season and ensure that they're comfortable with their name being in any sort of media. Um, and if not, not use it, um, but the head coaches of the varsity teams, uh, regularly report scores. Um, a lot of the times at big games, the reporters there, they might do short interviews after games, and some programs even have social media pages. Um. So in that case, yeah, it, it, it could be safe to have the coaches and or myself the page. Make the, the kids are comfortable with their names being out there.
Yeah, I think it could just be, um, I don't know that parents would know to tell a coach. Um, don't, don't tell my, like, and there's a difference between a school's social media page too and something that's Google-able. So if a name is in like a Beacon Velager and someone Googles a child's name, it would come up, um, so it could just be important to check. Thank you, though.
No, I agree. Um, I think that. That's like, yeah, that sounds, it'll also be added to the student athlete, the parents are also a college receipt of. Uh, kind of a, a little statement in there saying, if you are uncomfortable with having any sort of. Family name out in the media or your child's name out in the media, um, please let. Some at the school know, the athletic director, the coach, et cetera.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Thank you so much.
Um.
Welcome.
I just had two questions for you, Mike. Uh, one was, I, I do appreciate that. From a punitive perspective, when it comes to the academics, we're not swinging the pendulum too conservative, because I do feel that there are. Um, the physical nature of doing is, is helpful in many ways for the well-being of, of kids and, um. And so I just want to, you know, appreciate, you know, that sometimes when it comes to academics needing support, that, um. You know, pulling them out of completely a program of doing their athletics can also be. A hindrance, and when I think about the social emotional stuff that's going on right now, I know. A lot of that is really important to be cognizant of, that we're not just being too rigid and disqualifying a student. Um, but we're providing some of those probationary opportunities that they can, um. You know, continue on, but maybe learn or make up. Um, I did receive a question from a parent recently, and I, I maybe missed it in the handbook, but. Um, about an MIAA rule regarding student eligibility, so if we have a Maynard student, well, we have Maynard. Um, the Maynard students, the Maynard children who are not. Um, part of Maynard public schools, but they live in Maynard and they maybe go to a private school. That doesn't have an athletic program. Um. Are those students able to participate, or have there been rules that have updated to allow? Um. Those students to participate if their school does not have an athletic program with Maynard?
Um, yeah, so if there is a student that is a Maynard resident in the school that does not have, uh, athletic programs. Um, there is a waiver, um, through the MIA that can allow that student to participate within a public schools program. As long as all parties involved agree, both schools, uh, superintendents and, uh, administration all around. Um. And also. Obviously, they have to abide by whatever rules Maynard Public Schools has, uh, within our handbook stand, uh, just from academics, everything.
Is there instances where we would not? Support that opportunity, or I'm just want to understand the, the, the circumstances of the pros and the cons, where that might be, because it sounds like it's an exception, but. Maybe has happened in, in Maynard and, you know, um. So I just want to, I don't know if this is a new rule or if this has always existed, and we, maybe we, we haven't. Been party to agree to it, that's, I'd wonder if that's. I don't know if it's you or Brian, I don't know the best.
I think, uh.
So, yeah, I see it.
I mean, this rule that Mike referenced, the, the situation exists in most. Towns and cities and whatnot, and what Mike described as that waiver process is pretty common, that's not new.
Okay, so if, um. I guess the example, if we had, you know, progress, I know sometimes we're always looking for, like, the kids in, I don't know, six, we, we, sometimes we're looking for enough participants, right? In certain sports that we, we have to tap into the lower grades, try to, you know, get enough, and, um, I guess the question is. Um. We, would we, if there was a student who was not a Maynard public school student, but was a resident of Maynard? Would we welcome that or allow that, or what would be the circumstances where that would or would not be allowable? Um. If there seems to be a need, because that, that's the part I want to kind of get a, a little bit. Understanding.
From, from my, yeah, my role, um, I wouldn't want to displace any Maynard public school student from participating. There in their sports. Uh, if our programs had enough numbers, uh, say we have waivers that allow. School-age students to participate on the high school level teams because our numbers are so low. And in those instances, I wouldn't even personally, um, displace students to allow old Maynard residents who don't go to Maynard. Um, it is really kind of a gray area. We did have one case this, this year, but it was on a middle school level team. Um, so he wasn't displacing anyone, it was a no-cut sport, um. He had been playing sports with these kids through youth programs growing up. Um, it does get a little trickier when it comes to high school, and it's, it's kind of, uh, uncommon, um. But like I said, we did have one case of it at the middle school level this year.
No, thank you, and I, I think, um, probably Maynard specific because we, we aren't regionalized and we don't usually have a lot of. Tryouts, a lot of kids get to participate. I could certainly see we want to make sure that we are. The Maynard students are getting that, uh, opportunity first and foremost, so thank you for clarifying that. It sounds like. By, it's, sometimes it can be a judgment call depending on the, the host of factors, um, so even though it's allowable. Um, it may not be always the best opportunity for that particular sport or that, um, grade, depending on other circumstances. Is that correct?
Correct. Everyone involved has to be on board, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so I, I don't have any other questions, and I think at this point, um. Are we? Should we vote with edits? Are we comfortable at that? Are we voting, we're voting on this, right? So. I don't know, I know Hillary, you had some feedback, um. But this is a second. Read, so I just wanted to. And I'm guessing.
Comfortable with voting with edits. The only one that I'm like hugely, um. Like adamant about is the thing about the safety around releasing kids' names. Um, and it sounds like if he's able to add that to the parent student athlete handbook, um, I'm good with that.
Um, Mike, is that sound, is that some, some form of that? Are you comfortable with just editing and adding some language there? Um.
Yeah, to let the coach know if there's an issue.
I think we. Trust your judgment on wording there. Okay. Um. So I think we'll just, we'll vote on. Uh, here we go, so I'll make a motion that we approve the. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Maynard Athletic Department Student Athlete Handbook with edits.
I can second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Do we want to say which one it is? Because we've got A and B in here.
You know, the, the B is the coaches. I was, I did, I made the motion for the student athlete handbook. I think that's the one I was looking at, sorry. Any, anyone, um. Because Hillary, you were, the comments that you had edits were on the student one, right? Or those the coaches?
Um, mostly the students. Okay, I'm good, I'm good voting now, though.
Okay. All right, um. Okay, so, uh, roll call, Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Um, Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Tasha Rivera, yes. Okay, and then. I think for the next one, I'll make a motion that we approve the. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Maynard Athletic Department Coaches Handbook with edits.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Mary Brantley?
Yes.
And Tasha Rivera, yes. All right, Mike, thank you so much, and again, I just, I sent an email, but I just also want to extend another appreciation while you're here and have the opportunity to get some face time with you. On all the work that you've been doing, um, now that we have a full-time A D, it's been, it's really. Amazing to see like, oh, what we, what we needed, um, you don't know until you know, and you've really highlighted all those areas of opportunities that. Have better situated us, so thank you for. Wonderful last year, looking forward to. Great year ahead, and I appreciate all the updates and, um, work that you're doing, um, in the community.
You know.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate that. It's been great and, you know. You really don't know until you know, and I'm just happy that we can, you know, bring the department up together, the school system, the community as a whole, so thank you again.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
You as well.
Okay. Anything else that we're done with that? So I think it's just the
Just to note, we're going to have to vote on those athletic fees before fall, since we only approved them through the end of last year.
Yeah, so I think we'll have to add those
Colleen said she could get that data for the August meeting.
The, what we with the August 17th meeting? Okay.
Colleen, can you, can you let us know? Since Mike came on, did, were we able to bring in more money because we just make sure that everything's paid or that works? Check with the business office. I mean, typically we do get a good turnaround of fees.
Yeah, well, I know that, you know, that was one of the, one of the reasons for us hiring, you know, an athletic director was that we would be part of that, you know, being able to make sure that, you know, that was participated or were actually paying. So or at least getting, you know, getting scholarships or whatever.
In the past, who we knew about were more receiving. So I think that's where the gap was. Sometimes we wouldn't get kids on the list. And then those kids wouldn't pay, but we wouldn't know that you Okay, so.
And and maybe that's a maybe a budget some committee because I know we talked about looking at the historical now that we have the school, school box with collecting electronically and seeing if there's any comparison from, you know, before school box versus after. If we're consistently able to collect more that way as well. So, okay. Chair report, I already talked about the self-evaluation and the goals I'll go back and look at and I'll send an email in the next couple of days about those two things in particular. So nothing more there. The only other thing is, Brian, there was something about special education funding that was shared in mask. Has that, have you heard anything about budget, budgety stuff? It was in the news, the, it was in the listserv that something got approved for additional special education, part of the reserve funds for the state.
I'll go back and take a look. I know that there's a digital money coming for homeless students across the state. We don't have too many students that qualify as homeless per se.
Right.
But I'll take a look in the special education category.
Yeah, I think the one that I was in particular looking at, they maybe just sent it in the past day or so and it was something to do. I don't, I know the the budget, the technical budget hasn't been approved yet for FY24 for the state. So that's still in limbo.
Yeah, I can take a look.
Okay. And then I think the only other thing I just, oh, I didn't do this last time. Ken, I just wanted to take a moment to, I know Ken Estabrook has stepped away from the finance committee. And he has been a long champion of the schools. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank him publicly for all of his work as a prior school committee member on the FinCom and all around town, just to the years and years of of service for our community. Just to, I know he'll be probably enjoying his time off, but well, but I just, I know that he's worked tirelessly to to have the conversations on education constantly being discussed in in a thoughtful way. So just, it'll be sad that he's to see him go. And I know Alana stepped down as well. So there are a couple of new folks that have joined the finance committee. I don't have their, I had their name, their names weren't on the agenda for the last finance meeting. I'll send that over to everyone to who they are. So we have Katija, Katija, I think we all knew. And then there's two other people as well that I want, I'll circulate. So we have a couple of new, and then it sounded like Chris De Silva, is he chair of the the Green Meadow, he's the chair of the Green Meadow Committee, right? Is he also chair of those?
Mike Stevens is the second select board member. It was just not, but no, Jerry Culver is still the chair of the the Green Meadow Building Committee.
Oh, maybe I read that email wrong then. So is, so, hold on.
Oh, Chris was elected as the new chair of the select board. Is that what you mean?
I thought I saw something about chair of the Green Meadow, but I don't know, maybe I'm getting my different chair roles confused, which is totally possible. So maybe I guess for who is liaising, so is it that the select, was it Chris is with the the select board, but not the Green Meadow, right?
On the, the Green Meadow, he's one of the two select board members on the Green Meadow Building Committee. Mike Stevens was just also asked to be on it and agreed.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Chairs of the Green Meadow Building Committee. That's Jerry Culver.
Yeah. Well, that's why I was, that's why I was like, I have to go back and read. I'm sorry. Apparently I must have read chair and Chris and that's as far as I got of the whole email that I read. So, sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm spreading false information. Sorry. That's all I really have. Going on to, where are we at? I don't know if we have any other reports for school committee member, member reports? Mary, no.
I just wanted to, so talking about the school building committee, we talked the other night, I think, but if I did, the school building committee is meeting with the select board at their August 15th meeting to kind of update them on where we are and myself and one other building member have, we've been meeting with different school, different select board members to get their questions and concerns that way. We want to get one to get on their agenda and we need to do to also have the school building committee present in front of the school committee also. So we'll do that maybe in September.
That'll be great. I'll add that to the rolling agenda once we get that going. Thank you. I know that I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I know we talked about having presentations of the safety committee, technology. Also, if we could, I was thinking if we could have Officer RSR, Officer Can come and and talk to us about, you know, how this past year has been and what goals that this year are. That would be great. So it'd be fantastic. And then he asked us the other one that we talked about, nothing have come and just talked to us about where they are as far as as far as, yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Mauro?
I don't really have a whole lot. We have a policy subcommittee meeting, I think on the 25th. So I know that we talked a couple of, a little bit about things that guys wanted us to to go over. So try and make sure that I have those on the agenda for that. So.
Okay. All right. And then Hillary, is anything for you?
Not really. I just wanted to apologize for my distracting little sidekick here, meeting at six o'clock, but she's wide awake and active, but now ready for bed.
I love it. So just also circling back, yes, I did. Apparently I did read Greg's email. It's totally wrong. And Brian, I, I think it would be helpful that to meet with the leadership in some way. I think we're going to have some budget conversations that are not going to be leading up to, you know, I think it'll be helpful to have another form of communication, although it doesn't necessarily need to be. Maybe Chris and I can work out if, you know, I know he's more of a casual, if we, we need to have you and Greg there, you know, I don't want to just meet cuz, but I think it would be helpful to have communication lines open as much as possible. So however you, you and Greg and Chris suggest something, I, I would, I think it would be important for us to continue in some way.
Okay.
Right. And then I think the only other thing I'll send out emails and everything else. I'm like so tired right now. So I will be out for a little bit. Just off, I'll, I'll be, won't be able to type too much. So I'll, if anything, probably for two weeks after next Thursday. So I'll probably be available, but I might not be able to drive too much driving and stuff like that just because of my hand. So I'll keep everyone posted.
Talk for that.
Thanks. Thanks. All right. We don't have any no minutes, right?
No minutes. The warrants are 74 and 75.
Okay, all right. So without objection, I will move that we accept warrants 23074 and 23075. All right. That's okay. Accepted. And then I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I can say in that.
I mean, or you guys can hang out there, but I'm leaving. All right, roll call Hillary?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mauro? Natasha, yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Everyone have a good evening. Brian, Colleen, thank you, everyone joining. Thank you very much.